Anyone please stand. By our heads, please. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we want to come right now asking your blessings on this meeting. And not just the meeting, Lord, but every person that's here interested in the progressive state of Fannin County. Lord, I just pray that you would just help us as commissioners that we will have by the wisdom to do the right things, Lord, that we will all in this meeting conduct ourselves in appropriate manner, that we will work with each other to the better matter of your kingdom and Fannin County. We ask these things in Christ holy name. Amen.
Number one, under unfinished business, they have the approval of the minutes of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. This will be our regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Searcy, any errors or omissions in those minutes?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pan.
I have none, Chairman. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, under new business, this is a marriage request from American Cowboy Construction LLC to build a new home thirty-five feet from the center line of High Waka Trail. Is there anybody here that supports this marriage? Is there anybody here in opposition? Okay. All right, gentlemen, I went out, took a look at this, really didn't see any issue at all. Open it up for discussion. Mr. Searcy, get any?
I have none. It looks good.
Mr. Pan.
I'm sure, you know, it's getting crowded up there on board gap. I'm sure you will reject parking, all that stuff.
Yep.
It's good.
Excellent. Flatter me. Park is actually coming in from the side and it's not going straight in.
So, yeah, it won't be off the street parking. It'll actually have its own driveway.
That's good.
With the painted walls for a turnaround.
Great. I have no objection.
Okay. Make a motion to approve this marriage request and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, the next marriage request comes from VR Toccoa LLC. What this is, is to have minimum subdivision lot size of one acre with city water and individual subject systems. From what I understand, gentlemen, this could be eleven to twelve lots. I talked to Mr. Nixon, who actually talked to Mr. Graff with the Board of Health, the health department over there. And I think this actually meets their requirements as well. It's across from Old Toccoa Farms on the north. Old Toccoa River Road.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here in opposition to this marriage request? Anyone here to support it? Any discussion, gentlemen?
No, sir.
I have none.
Make a motion to approve this marriage request and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right. The next one, another marriage request from Mountain Sunshine Properties LLC to build a rocks thirty-eight feet from the center line. Does anyone here oppose this marriage request or support it? And when I looked at this one, I didn't see an issue. I also talked to Keith Nixon in regard to this one as well. And he was thinking where the measurements was that it was actually going to be.
Further back.
Further back. So, and even at thirty-eight feet from the center line.
That's still.
It's still fine, in his opinion, so. Any discussion on this, gentlemen?
No, sir.
I'm good.
Okay. Make a motion to accept this marriage request and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, that brings us down to, this will be a board discussion action. This is an intergovernmental agreement with the Fannin County Board of Education for the summer program this year, twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Williams, would you care to come up? Because I think Eddie Norman comes up.
That's nice. My pleasure to be here. Thank you all for having us on the agenda this evening. So, this is the annual agreement between the Board of Education and the Commissioners and the Rec Department so that the Nutrition Department for Fannin County Schools can staff and serve food and meals to the students to participate in the summer program and have the Rec Department.
Any changes? We'd like to say.
It is the same.
How many kids do you expect?
I think they take in about a hundred.
A hundred a day?
Yes. It's a, it's a nice crowd.
That's awesome. And again, we've been able to be a part of this for a while, but at least the last four years we've been here. So, we're thankful to be a part of it.
It's a wonderful thing for our students.
Absolutely, it is. Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have none.
I'll make a motion to go into the intergovernmental agreement with the Fannin County Board of Education for this summer program. And I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fannin County Sheriff, Danny Kirby. I haven't had a call. It's him or Jekyll Place, I think.
It's what?
Give us either him or Jekyll Place, kind of make a presentation. Gentlemen, it's all right. We'll move this one down to the end just to see if something may have happened, maybe had to go out. Do I need to make a motion to do that? That's awesome.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to put number five down to number ten, just move everything up. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, so number six, we have our EMA Director Becky Huglin regarding the purchase of another equipment.
So, this is, I saved all the, all the copy of it. It's a coin for another power cot and a stair chair. We've got the new station that's going to be open, new station two, Spanish. And we'll have a med unit in there. Currently, the truck that we're using has good equipment, but it's older equipment because it's been spared. We've not been running it twenty-four hours, so this will upgrade their equipment to be where everything else is. The stretcher that they currently have is a two thousand and eighteen power cot, which we're still being able to service and it's in good shape. But since it's going to be running more calls, maybe twenty-four hours and stuff, we were going to upgrade. The main reason for it is that the cot that they have available right now is not going to be available in two months. It's the last model that they have. We're trying to keep everything uniform. The battery's the same. If we upgrade when they get the truck and everything, it will be completely different battery system and everything. So, we're just trying to stay uniform. So, this was the last one. They contacted me and said that this is actually the last stretcher that they have available. So, if we, if we don't decide to get it, we can still get other stretchers. It's not a push. It's just they won't be the same. We won't be able to share batteries. We won't be able to, the power packs will be different and everything.
So, this one, Becky, is like the one that you have that you can no longer get after this?
Correct. They'll still service it. It's a hundred percent under warranty. That's what some of it is, is the warranty on it. We just, we're trying to keep uniform with our stretchers. That way, if we need to swap one out or something, they're all the same. Or if a battery goes down on a truck, we can just pull from another station and give them a battery until we can get one replaced.
So, we have all our balances in have the same this time?
Yes. Yes, they all have the power stretcher that's in them.
So, when we change them, we're going to have to change them all?
We shouldn't have to change it. Right now, we're, we've replaced them over the years. It's just this model is not going to be available and they're upgrading from, it looks like a DeWalt battery that's in there and it just slides in. The ones that they're replacing in the newer model is a lithium battery that won't be able to be recharged and reused once it's done, it's done. So, we'll constantly be having to replace the batteries on it, which will be covered under our service program with them. But it just wouldn't be where if that battery went down and we needed another one, we couldn't just borrow one from another station to do it. So, we're just trying to keep with the uniformity of the stretchers and feel we absolutely have to get rid of them. And the reason, another reason is, is that because it is the last one that they have, it's discounted. The stretchers are usually thirty-five thousand dollars and this one is forty, twenty-four thousand dollars. So, it's discounted because it is the last one that they have and everybody else is kind of going to the newer models. But like I said, the ones that we have, the oldest ones we have is two thousand seventeen and it still functions perfectly. So, I'd say these will be in service for at least another ten years.
So, what's the total you're asking?
Total is thirty-seven, it'll be thirty-seven, two hundred seventy-six and thirty-three cents because we get a five hundred dollar credit for trading in a manual stretcher that we've got.
Give me that number again.
It'll be thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
Two hundred and seventy-six.
What is it?
It'd be thirty-seven, two seventy-six.
Yes, two seventy-six. I'm sorry.
Two seventy-six.
Yeah. The eight thousand dollars for the Pro Care is a five-year warranty program that they offer. It's the same thing as everything that we've got. It could be run over by a Mack truck and they'll completely replace everything that's on it with no charge. So, that's why we kind of like to have that.
Well, this one here was, you're thinking in, say like five, six years, although you said maybe through ten years. Do you think those don't have parts for this?
Yes. They, they guarantee that they'll still be able to service and maintain the parts of this until the stretcher is no longer operable. Until the stretcher, you know, just quits. Yeah. They, we still have the service program on the two thousand seventeen. They come in and do PMs once a year, check the hydraulics, give us new batteries. The batteries alone are five hundred dollars a piece. So, they give us new batteries for every stretcher that we've got. And this will put all of our trucks having power stretchers.
Is this getting, or is it getting out of here?
Gentlemen, any more discussion, Commissioner Searcy?
No.
No, sir.
Member Pan.
I'm good, Chairman. Thank you.
All right. I'll ask for a motion to approve the thirty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
When did you say you might get this coming in?
Do what?
When?
Oh, we should get it in the next couple of weeks. It's available now. The stair chair might be a little bit longer, but it should be available.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, by our Fannin County Board, Detective Allen, regarding the purchase of another equipment.
I'm asking for just a little bit more money. I just gave you two quote proposals from TWC Services, Refrigeration Services for corners, the coolers. One for seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars is for them to come and disassemble the cooler I have and reassemble it and at the new office. Which I don't know if we can work on something there.
Yeah. Do you remember when, when set this one up down here? Did they come and set this one up? Were you able to set it up and then hook it up or?
They come and hooked up their refrigeration. The probationers are the ones who, it came in on a truck and the probationers are the ones who put it together. And then they came in and sealed, made sure it was sealed and put it in the refrigeration.
Can we move this one? And then just let them come like hook it up the way it should be?
Should be a little bit of that.
That should save us some money, shouldn't it?
You vowed, you don't like it. You think so?
Well, on that part, can we, Mr. Chairman, we're going to work on that. I, I wouldn't even have to come back as long as you check with him and.
Sure.
Because I mean, if we can save some dough here.
Well, we won't, we won't come back with a more solid number. In other words, we don't want to blow this right now.
That's for them to take it apart and the refrigeration and everything and then take it over there. So, they're, they would go from start to finish. If we had some people to take it apart, they would have to come and take the refrigeration out because they're the ones that set that up. But we could take the panels of the door, everything out and transport it over to the new office and bring it in. Then they would come in and set it up. Probably didn't do that. It would be, surely it would be cheaper than.
Don't get our back. That's crazy, but.
I don't know about the refrigeration thing. I put it in, but I feel we can move it. I mean, first thing goes, but a couple of thoughts in my mind, and then you tell me if I'm wrong. We could prove up to this amount.
Yes, sir.
And then if it comes out to be less than opposite, we're good to go in that situation. One other thing I definitely like to get back with them is the taxes on that.
Yeah. I gave you the information that you're taxing. I know. I gave them the tax, gave Mr. Oliver the tax exempt number and he's still totally the same with taxes. So, I'll have to, I'm going to have to call him.
Where's this company out of?
Little Ridge.
Little Ridge?
It's here in Fannin County.
What?
It used to be Ace Refrigeration. They're the ones, same ones that services Dan's Refrigeration and stuff for the jail.
I'll make the guest two out of here, please.
Yes, we have, the next one is for a walking cooler that will hold up to your twelve bodies. So, our thinking was, because this one's going to take probably two months for it to be delivered. And if we could get the cooler we have now moved over there, then, but I've talked to both funeral homes and they both said that it would be fine if we use them here in our downtime. So, there will be a little bit of downtime.
How many is this one of?
I don't get that.
So, okay. So, you're going to want to keep it operational?
I'd like to, if possible.
All right. Any discussion on that?
No, sir.
On first motion, I would, I would make a motion to move to not exceed seventy-seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for the relocate of our current cooler from the corner office. I'll make that motion and I'll ask for a second.
What was that mail again, Mr. Chairman?
It'll go seventy-seven, sixty-six, twenty-five. Knowing that we're taxing them.
Right.
Under, under two should come along, worst case scenario. And then obviously it's cheaper than, than we're ahead of the game.
I'll, I'll say that.
All in favor?
And then the next proposal is for the new walking clothes cooler and it will go in same, around the same area. And it's, the subtotal is forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
And my apologies, the last, the last one comes out of public safety spots as well?
Yes, yes.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
This one, they both come with a, it looks like a five-year warranty. A one-year warranty for different things and then a five-year.
Pressure?
Yeah.
From the time that you initially put in for the first cooler, that's a four-person. Do you see a need for equipment?
Yes. There's times when, like, even if they're going to a funeral home, we're holding them because if that funeral home is overwhelmed, then they'll, they'll hold them or if you want to.
I see now, yeah. So, you like help each other?
We do help each other, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And by, if I'm full, which I have been, I have to take them.
Okay, I understand. That, that makes good sense.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
No, sir.
No, I have none.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a twelve-person cooler in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-six cents, which is actually taking away the tax from the original.
Yeah.
And that will be paid out of public safety slots as well. So, I'll make that, I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor? All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll give it our guys who make that, put that in.
Well, Larry Fleming's guys.
Okay, so we'll give it to Larry and maybe some of our maintenance crew and see what we need to do to, to have that transferred over there. He just will take the refrigerator out and put it back in the down. We can do that.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
We know you, Becky. Real quick, give us an update when you're being, you're mail.
We'll work it on the, we'll try and.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm still.
Center of the light, huh?
All right.
As soon as Lynn says, hey, the paperwork's signed, we're going to start moving some things that we're able to do because they've got to do the light fixtures and doors and stuff like that.
Okay.
But we'll be able to move some of the stuff.
Thank you.
All right, great. We have our MA Director, Patrick Toots.
Sorry. Hey, we're going. If you're liver, killer, months ago, we got the AFG grant for our, our track here, washers and dryers. It's come time, we've got all the paperwork done for that, all the backend stuff. So, it's come time to purchase the equipment. Got a quote here from MES for four washers and dryers. They are on Sourcewell, which does the bidding for us, so it should be covered there. But the total on this for four washers and dryers would be fifty-six thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. That is under the grant amount, so we can go back and request additional equipment. But if you suggest you go ahead and get this first round out of the way, then we can, then we can submit an amendment.
What's the, how about what's the amount of the grant?
The total amount of the grant's eighty-two thousand, three hundred. So, we've got quite a bit left and we can purchase additional.
The chair, you're sorry, you're mortal, don't you?
These are a little bit bigger than others.
And that, where's that going by?
So, that's four of them. These first four will go to the man stations, probably. One, Little Ridge, McCaswell, Orton, and here at Bird's Isle.
Okay.
But we'll have them left over to buy at least one more, say.
Okay. I guess one in matter of nothing end up before?
We'll, we'll get one over there once this is completed.
Okay.
We had to do environmental studies on these, so you kind of had to tell them where it's going to go. But we do have an existing one at Station One that we can move to.
Your name of approval was in the fifty-six thousand?
That's correct.
Okay. Out of the eighty-two, three?
Out of the eighty-two, three.
Okay, all right. My friends.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, any discussion on that? I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchase, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight.
Twenty-nine and ninety-eight cents.
Two hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-eight cents. I'll ask for that motion?
I get a motion.
Ask for a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Next, we have our Fannin County Fire Chief, Larry Thomas. Give us some money back.
Good.
They changed the road look on the year. I want to hit, paste these out. Usually I paste these out, I have to get over this stage fry, this all at once. But anyway, I'm looking to purchase a combi tool. It is part of the jaws of life. And what it is, it's a combi tool, being a spreader and a cutter, all in one tool. And then, as you can see, it costs twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and nineteen cents. And then the batteries for them are seven, thirty-six, thirty-two each, which brings it to a figure of fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-two cents. And that particular tool will go on the rescue pumper. Well, that's the new truck that we fixed and put in the service. The new fire truck that we got at Station One. All of our rescue trucks have got it, but we're going to run Rescue One and the Rescue Pumper out of Station One. But if Rescue One's out on the call and we'll get another call, we'll have another set of tools on that one. And if we need it in addition to Rescue One here on the four lane with buses or big trucks or anything like that, we'll always have a backup set of tools to build on the next truck out.
Okay.
So, we should be saying pretty good with this?
Yes. I do know that we, in the past, you and I, two years now, have been buying that with donations as far as these tools go, and they're not cheap. I mean, we've got set on Rescue One, Rescue Two, and so forth and so on, all the way up. You've got the same tools on City's out there, Station City's.
The Hammy Down, yeah.
The Hammy Downs. Well, and you, as you can, look too, this is a demo unit, so we're not going with a brand-new unit, but we are getting a warranty on it. He didn't actually say how long that warranty be, but these tools are good tools. It's some of the best made.
What's a new one, Carl, saying, of this is them?
I'd say eighteen.
It is sixteen.
Sixteen thousand.
You know if they come with the same warranty, like you?
I think they all come with the same warranty.
I think the last ones you bought, he was giving us the same warranty because it was a private demo. But I want to think you can give them the same warranty as you.
Yeah, and they look, and these demos have just been taken out, the other departments have showed. It ain't like they've been in the line of duty. They've actually worked with them at some of these other departments, showing, you know, show and tell. But as far as that goes, it's still, it's a, like, brand-new piece of equipment.
Okay.
Gentlemen, any discussion on that?
I have none.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchase. I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchase, in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-two cents, for a combi two, and I'll ask for that motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second?
Ask sir.
All in favor? Alright, thank y'all.
Me too.
Gentlemen, um, I know we, uh, good. Number five down to number ten. Let's see, um, Sheriff and, uh, if you place here, I'd like to make a motion to put them next. And ask for a second?
Ask sir.
All in favor?
That's my fault, I thought it was six o'clock.
Hey, I, I did that one time.
Sorry.
They just me, I was late.
Yeah, I thought it was six o'clock, sorry. Uh, let me give y'all one of these each, I'll make y'all copy, you don't need a lot of that.
That's okay, I'll get a bunch, sir, I just didn't find you.
That's a short version of what you have. So, unfortunately, one of the, uh, one of the requirements to be able to police in this new modern age, a way of doing things is basically that you, you record everything you do, whether it be documented on paper, or video recorded, or audio recorded, it's just a requirement these days. Uh, we can't prosecute a case without having video of it anymore, that's how modern things have become. And we've been in the video making business for a long time, but what's happened is it's grown, it's got bigger, we make a lot more cases than we used to. We have a whole lot more encounters than we used to, and we video and record a whole lot more things than we used to. Used to, when we went out on a call or we had an encounter with somebody, we made the decision whether or not we think we need to turn our body cam on, or whether or not we think we need to turn our, our car cam on, but now it's not that way. Now, it's, you have to turn it on every time you have an encounter with somebody. So, what we realized was, a few years ago, that all this video that we create has got to be stored somewhere. So, when we started looking into different options and different ways of doing that, um, what we found out was that if you wanna do it the easy way, and hit the easy button, you can, but it's very expensive. So we decided not to do that, we thought we'd be smart just doing ourselves. So we bought some multi-terabyte, terabyte, um, storage devices to store all this video on, instead of having to pay the cloud storage fees, and we've been doing that for years. And basically what that means is when a, when an officer comes in, he has to plug his unit, whether it be his, his body cam or his car camera, computer thing, he has to plug it in to pull it out to store onto a computer. Well, that computer will only hold so much, so the way we've been doing it, as backwards as we are, um, Keith has to keep an eye on that computer, and when it starts getting full, he has to take that and transfer it off onto one of these big storage devices, um, to free up space for the guys to be able to continue to develop. Well, what we have come to realize is, that when we transfer all this video onto that big multi-terabyte storage device, we may see it again and we may not. Um, and it's, it's, there's thousands and hundreds of thousands of videos to have to sort through once it ends up on that device, if you ever need to go back and find it and pull it again. It's creating a tremendous problem. Um, there's been videos that we've not been able to produce because we've not been able to find them, we know they're there, but we just can't find them. So, I guess along with the short of it is, the way we've been doing it is just not working anymore. Um, our volume is overtaking us and there, there's problems starting to pop up that we just can't be responsible for. We, we can't be responsible for losing videos, period. Uh, however, mind you, it might be, I mean, if we make the recording, we're responsible for it for the next seven years, we gotta be able to produce it. So, it's time to fix it, and it's gonna cost us four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do it over the course of five years. Uh, we've got a detailed proposal here, we've, we've been working on this thing for at least two months. And, um, we've looked at different options, there was another option that, uh, included some other stuff that was much more expensive, but not really necessary for us, and they got into stuff other than video storage, like tasters that were compatible with your video cameras and all kinds of space-age type stuff that we just don't see a need for. Um, but we do see a need to be able to, uh, to retrieve our videos, uh, uh, period, but, um, and it'd be much easier than what it has been over the last few years. But basically, what this proposal does is it swaps out all of our current equipment, our in-car cameras and our body cameras, with current equipment that is compatible to be able to download directly to the cloud just as quick as videos are made. Um, they gave us a credit of about, you remember those figures, about forty-two thousand dollars on our body cams? For a top, yeah, okay, about four hundred dollars each on our, um, body cams and about twelve hundred dollars each on our car cams, for a total of forty-two thousand dollars is the credit that they gave us. Now, when you look through what I gave you there, you're like me, you're not gonna know what a lot of this stuff is. Um, but it's just little do-dads that are necessary to make this system work. They'll have to put a modem on every single vehicle that allows that thing to, their, their car will be hooked to the internet all the time. And when they make a, a video, it communicates it through the internet and sends it to the cloud, wherever the cloud is. So, that's kinda the way this thing works, in a nutshell. Uh, and I know y'all probably have questions, and that's why he's here. Uh, did I miss anything? I mean, that was just a high sp- high spot summary.
High spot summary.
Yeah.
Tell me the only thing I'll add, which, I mean, I can throw Patrick in here, he knows how foregone our current system is.
Yeah, Patrick knows all about what I'm.
I call him all the time, bro, the best stuff, uh. Not only that, it's gonna save deputies time, so right now, I mean, they go out, work all day, say if they have four or five hours video, not only are they downloading their body cameras and in-car, once it goes to that computer, which that can take anywhere from an hour to two hours to do both then, they're gonna have to transfer it to the server, which also takes another hour or two. So, I mean, we're talking this time that it's taken the deputies to move these videos around is a lot of the issue also.
Okay, here's what I'll talk about now. Um, I told you that figure, but if you go to the very back of the back page, there's a breakdown up there. Um, and another thing that we did do too was, like I say, we've been working back and forth with this company for, for months now, trying to figure out what we need, what we don't need, and how much it's gonna cost. And they put a lot of work in it too, I mean, it wasn't just pulling it out of the air. It, it took a lot of, uh, back and forth between their, their people, but anyway, we, we bounced it off of them that would, we'd get a better price if we just paid for it all at one, all at once. And basically the response we got, that this was a bare-bones quote, and that, that wouldn't help nothing. So they broke this thing down for us, uh, they couldn't do it, um, evenly every single year, but the, the upfront cost for the first year is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then it's seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the next four years after that.
And then also, we're in warranty under all this, it's unlimited storage, after thirty months, they actually exchanged our body cameras for brand-new ones.
So halfway through, you'll get brand-new body cameras, body, body and cord.
So, couple of questions, uh, this is, this is the same type of stuff that we done over here at Blue Ridge?
Yeah, y'all, y'all went to the cloud years ago.
Right, but my question, the way that we set ours up was that when the unit pulled up, it automatically downloaded, so it saved the officer a lot of time.
Yeah.
Does this system do that? We've got the capability to not have to pull up, we can do it from anywhere that they've got cell phone service. Now, they're gonna put two devices over here on our jail, in case the cell network builds down. They can pull it up over here and do what you've been doing for years. Now, we're, we're going just a little bit farther than what y'all did by having those modems been able to download anywhere that your cell. I think they may download now, they've got modems in their units. They do then, they don't have to pull. Yeah, they, we don't, I think that we did, we said, we put the modems in, but, and another thing, the way that they're setting up the evidence of the film or the video, i- i- is it gonna be easier for your guys to get the videos you made? Oh, a hundred percent of them, and, and not just us, but anybody else it needs, you know, open records requests, the district attorney's office to prosecute cases will, if somebody sends up us an open records request, making a video, right? We've got two options, we can either, for now, we can burn it onto a disk and send it to them. That's what we do. Alright, or we can email them, or text message them, a link that they can click on, and it goes. That's good. It does, it does it to the computer. Okay.
Makes it a whole lot easier for retrieval.
So. It's just the damn modern way of doing things. Yeah, so. I don't like it no more than y'all do. So, we can actually, if we do, we can pay this like once, I mean, we can pay it every year. We pay it out sploshed every year. Every year, instead of just doing this one big old lump sum to make. Yeah, we, they, yeah, exactly.
They wouldn't take the lump sum.
Yeah, I went back to him and asked him, like, hey, if we could just buy this out, like, what, what can you do? I mean, might say this is about my six or seven quota got from he's, I know he's a salesman, can't believe everything they said, but I, he's really, he's working with me a bunch.
There might be some salesmen in there, be careful.
You can slate some of them.
But, uh, I mean, he, he straight said, he'll put it, he pushed it through, but he said there, there wasn't even enough there. We also tried to get their financing, wouldn't even separate the five years out evenly, they're like, it's already discounted way too much, we can't, we can't do that.
So, when are you? We kind of just shy threatening them. So, when are you planning on, if this gets through tonight, when you, when you, when's this taking place? Tomorrow, okay. I mean, no, I mean, we'll get started immediately, at least for it, yeah.
And this, this includes all install, they come and take all the old stuff out?
They do all the maintenance. Yeah, our luck is running out the way we're doing it now.
So I know it sounds crazy, but, I mean, is there any training goes, is there any?
There's some showing.
Training?
There's some showing, yeah.
They have some training built in that, uh, it's, it's very similar to what we're kinda dealing with now, just our cloud system, I mean, it's capable of a lot more. It's not gonna be too big to hurt, but.
One other question, I know you was talking about how you, you split the modem in each car, and you, it'll download anywhere you got cell service, alright? It's like we're pulling high dollars on like that, we don't.
Yeah.
Will that, as quick as it comes into service, automatically download?
As soon as it comes back into service, it will.
It's in your computer, right?
Okay.
I know it's a lot, Lynn, you got any questions?
Good, good.
I think we have to have, it's just the damn necessary equal, I don't, I don't like that either. So, we pay the, the upfront cost, and then do we pay the, the two-year? No, we pay that one twenty-five for the next twelve, that, that'll get us through the next twelve months, and then at the end of that twelve months, seventy-five thousand will be used. Then in the next twelve months, another seventy-five, all the way through for five years. And so that, that'd give you enough time to make sure this system's working great, right? So it would, yeah. Okay. Alright, it's true, it would. Cause you're not like selling, I mean, it's not like concrete, you have to pay it if you don't like it, I mean, that'd give you time. Well, it's a, I mean, it's a five-year contract, it is, but everything's under warranty though. Okay. I, we, we feel very confident in the way this thing operates, um, everybody uses the same thing. Okay. Um, if there was a hole in it, I think the Blue Ridge, you know, the Noel, the Kaseful, GSP, everybody uses this type of system. Yeah. And the, the equipment is undeniably warranted. Okay. If anything goes wrong, it's basically theirs, alright?
If this is gonna sound stupid, but I, cause I think I know the answer, but as you get new equipment, this, this system can be added to whatever new equipment you get, new cars as you go along?
Yes, the in-cars, yeah, yeah, they sure can, yeah, we've been doing that for years, just swapping them out. But the problem that we've got now is these, these cameras that we're running now are, are not compatible with this system. Is that correct, with the downloading to the cloud type thing? Is that all your units getting that? No.
So it's, it's nineteen in-car and fifty-five body cameras?
Nineteen.
Every sworn off, so.
Yeah, our court services guys, they don't need, uh, in-car cameras. Our SROs, do they have, they don't have in-car cameras, so we're not putting it in every car. It's just your unit, your patrol. Yeah, there's nineteen of those. Sounds good. Yeah, we cut it back every way we could, uh, and this is the jail, too, you know, we, every, every detention officer has a body cam. Yeah, would you ever thought of that?
And these body cameras are also wifi capable, so like school resource or court services or something, since that thing hits wifi a lot, like, a little video.
Okay, thank you.
Cause right now, they're having to come to UPD, school resource everybody to, you know, upload all their videos.
Okay. Alright, let's let them think.
Alright, gentlemen, um, I'll make a motion, um, purchase this equipment in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents, to be paid in five installments. The first one being a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the last four being, um, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents apiece. I'll make that motion and ask for a second?
Ask sir.
All in favor? And that'll, that will be paid out of public's loss annually.
Now it would be broken, a lot of people do without.
Alright, so that brings it down to the number ten. This is more discussion, uh, or action on property in Minter Bluff, adjoining, adjoining Fire Station Number Two. So Commissioner Cersei, I think, you've been actually working on this. Kinda?
Yes, uh, down at that new station in Minter Bluff that we're buying, I, I just got to looking at that down there, and, uh, the Nichols property, it has two little houses sitting on it, it's on the whole corner. And we're building this really nice fire department, and it's also a voting precinct too. And I just, I got to thinking about that, and I talked to the, to the owners of that, and we can purchase that one corner right there, which will connect to ours, and we can open it up. Uh, great view of the, everything that's being built there, and it'll open it up for the people, uh, that's coming to vote, especially it's got a meeting room, I think, on your new building, is that right, Larry?
Yep.
So I, I was looking at that, and I just think it would, uh, uh, help that fire department, but also, it would beautify that a lot, though, too. And it would show, and I think it'd be a, a safety issue too somewhat, because, uh, I think the people, you know, it would be so open that, uh, yeah, yeah.
They got access to that?
Yeah, they have ac- it also helped the fire department too because of the, because of the, uh.
Access?
Yeah, and seeing.
They just got one way?
No, they got a, they got two ways, but I guess that won't be a one-way street after it opens, it'll be open either way, correct? So, uh, I just think it would help it a lot more as far as vision and, uh, distance of seeing, and also, uh, fixing that up down there, making that look a lot better, actually showing that building off, and, you know, uh, and we can get that.
Yeah, call?
Yeah, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand, right.
For the property.
Tell me how much property, I mean, what property was that?
I think it is, Keith went down there with me, and, uh, we looked at it, and it was a, they have seedy lots like down there, it's like
Right.
hundred by hundred or hundred by two hundred, and, uh, but I think, cause they own several acres back up there.
Right.
And it's already been surveyed. County surveyor went down and surveyed. County surveyor went down and surveyed.
So you have a land acre square feet in, that's what we got?
Is that both of those buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit, it's, I'd say at least, guessing, close to an acre long.
I'd say, I'd say about a half acre, or maybe a quarter. It's a big, huh? It's a half, it's about a half, coach.
But it's right there on the street too.
What street is it on, guys?
It's on Minter Bluff Highway.
Clement.
Clement Street is the name of where.
Right across from the post office. It's a cotton nickels property. And it's got two structures on it now, but, uh, I was looking if we could, you know, they may be tore down. And we could fix that area up real, real nice right there.
Well, open that up all the way back and let that be starting of the parking lot.
Yeah, or even a little park down there. Build over a half an acre.
Well, that would also, with that, um, line all of that property up?
It's squared up.
You call that square, everything up, just want to.
It's squared up, right.
And the county would have it, that'd be the county problem. And I'd like to make a motion to buy that, if we could, and get started on it, make that look better.
You think that's a good price?
Yes, sir, I do.
What we got? How about you, Chairman?
I think it, uh, I think it's a good price for, to tie everything together, in my mind. And that way it's, we're, again, we're not blocking that little W now, we, we have the whole thing, and it just really makes it easier for us to get in and out. Yeah.
Well, not only that, it's like, we're looking at that road there, the fire department with the trucks, I think that was at a four bay?
Yeah.
That's a four bay, and, I mean.
Four, but then the two small.
Yeah, I got you.
There's gonna be a lot of equipment right there, you're building a nice building down there, it needs to be opened up to be seen.
Well, safety just isn't huge, you know, by the side.
Yeah.
But that's a busy intersection.
Yes, it is.
Can I say something, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Uh, with that, you might not have that chance again, you know, if somebody buys that house again, so this was one time opportunity.
Yeah, that's on that there, now if you wanna buy the whole, uh, house, which I don't see the need for us to go any further, but they also said that we could buy the whole parcel with a house on it, the other house on it, for one fee, only to the county. So, uh, you know, that's cause it's the county, because if they give some price like that.
I think it'd be good to square up the property, in my mind.
Yeah.
Think over that, what do you think? Well, that being said, I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchase of approximately half an acre. With an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, will that come out of public's savings loss as well? I'll ask for that motion.
Uh, I'll say, or I'll make a motion.
I'll, uh, I'll say it, and, uh, all in favor?
Thank you. I guess, Lynn, how do we, uh, tell them to contact you or something? Okay, is it okay to give them your set over?
Oh, please.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us down to, uh, public commentary. Anybody's got anything they'd like to say? Yes, sir.
I'm Larry Spud, and I live on Cooper Creek. And, uh, I just wanted, first off, what y'all did on Ask a Road, for Ask a Trail, to get people to park there, along the side of the road, has really helped out with that area. Now, yesterday, uh, Sunday, when I was going to church, there was twenty-one cars there at the swinging bridge. They were in the road, and they were everywhere, and I know we got the Yankees coming here and the Floridians, and they don't know any better. But there's only a place for like five or six cars there, and it'd be really nice if we could do something right there by the trail, and where they walk all the way over to the swinging bridge, and, uh, it's happened right now. I mean, Sunday morning, we were going with the time change, and we got there a little early, but we were about ten o'clock, and there was twenty-one cars. And that's a lot, and there's only a place for like five or six to park there. I just think we can do something like we did at Ask a Road, and help out these people that are enjoying our, our camp.
So what I, what we can try to do on that is, I'll have to work with, um, I think it's T V A. I'd be glad to see if there's anything we can do.
Right.
And, uh...
Well, you know, you got the trail that goes to the right there, going, going north, and then, and then you got the swinging bridge. But, I mean, twenty-one cars is a lot of cars. And apparently, it's because of how popular that is, and it's a nice area, but you can take the kids there and everything else, and it's just a, what, three-quarter mile walk to the swinging bridge? So like, it's a lot of people are parking there and don't wanna drive on that gravel road, and I know that's forestry property, so, um, we can't do anything with that, but right there on the road, and it'd be, it'd be on either side, we could do something to help them out there.
We're gonna have to make a call and see what we can do.
See what we can do with it.
Oh, and does tell.
Well, you, you want to public comment and bring things up, and this is one of...
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else? Too many people here not to say a thing, come on.
What was that, tax rebate you were gonna give us?
So, anyone else? All right, before we, before we do leave tonight, um, I'd like to, uh, to bring up something. I don't know if anybody, everybody knows Jane Beard or not, but, you know, Jane's been a, uh, uh, a big part of this community for many, many years. I remember, believe it or not, when I was a kid, her, her teaching me, and she might have been maybe one of the only substitute teachers at what, the high end, but, you know, I'm sure I deserved it, but, uh, but we lost her, uh, the day before yesterday. And, uh, she's also on our Board of Assessors, and, and she's done a fine job for this town for many years, in different ways, and, uh, you know, our, our prayers go out to, to her family, and her extended family, and, and the friends, cause I know it's gonna be a, uh, it's a loss. And, uh, we'll miss her, smiling face coming in there and ripping me up for something that I should've done and didn't. But, uh, but, but Jane was, uh, she's a friend to me, and I just wanted to, to bring that up tonight, she will be truly missed. And, uh, I always try to finish on a positive, and, and not to, to downplay that at all, but, um, I do wanna also congratulate, uh, our, uh, our girls' basketball team.
Oh, yeah.
They won the state championship this past weekend, and, uh, I think it's been, if my mind serves me, about twenty-six years since that happened, uh, in the girls' basketball, so we're, we're very thankful that they went out there and represented us very well. Not only that, um, while we're giving shout out, let's give one out to the boys' basketball, who had their first ever Elite Eight appearance. So, you know, we, we're, we're very proud of our athletes, we're very proud of our, uh, teachers and, and our coaches and things like that. I think, uh, Commissioner Patterson can, can understand that, as, uh, as he was a, from what I understand, was, uh, an athlete in his day. Which is about three or four years ago.
Now he turned the lie, now he's lying.
That's what he's saying, he, he said.
But, you know, we're, we're very proud of all our athletes, uh, here in Fannie County, and how they represent us. They go down there and they work their high ends off, and, uh, and, and it's paying off. So we're very thankful, and just wanted to put that plug in, so, gentlemen, y'all got anything? Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We did break ground on the library.
Hey!
Hey!
Then pass with actually, so we hope to, uh, to see some, some ground moving here shortly on that, so we're very thankful for that. Anybody else got anything to say before we go? All right, um, that brings us down to executive session, is there a need for executive session, gentlemen?
Well, no, I guess I don't have any time.
Commissioner Patterson? Well, I don't think, well, that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn, and ask for a second.
I'll say.